It's been only one meeting a month, right? Yeah, so. He hasn't asked me to cover the reorganization or anything.
I get it. Our reorganization is going to be January third. You'll see it on the agenda of an upcoming meeting for next year.
Sounds good. Yeah. In April, I'll be on maternity leave, so I definitely won't be here then.
Okay.
All set?
One, two, three, four, we got five, six. We're good to go. What about Ram?
I haven't heard.
Okay.
We'll open up. We have enough to open anyway.
My son's family.
Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting, December thirteenth. A regular meeting of the East Windsor Regional School District Board of Education. Written advance notice of this meeting was provided at least forty-eight hours ago. Such notice provided the time, date, and location of this meeting and included the agenda to the extent it was known at the time. Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with law. Minutes of this meeting are being kept by the board secretary and will be made available promptly to any members of the public requesting them from the board secretary at twenty-five A Leshin Lane, Hightstown, New Jersey. Minutes will be provided at cost and in accordance with board policy. Are there any board members present who believe this meeting to be in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act? There being none, we may proceed in compliance with fire code of state New Jersey and call your attention to the emergency exits for this room, which are located behind the audience and to my left and right. Item one B.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the approval of agenda, please?
Having read the materials received, I move the agenda be approved as submitted.
Second.
Any questions? Call the board, please.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Brigholi?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Mr. Lavery?
Yes. Item one D.
Be resolved that the East Windsor Regional School District may hold two closed sessions at this meeting on December thirteenth, 2021. These closed sessions concern Staffing Report of December thirteenth, 2021, HIB report of December thirteenth, 2021, update non-tenured administration, EWRSSA arbitration, litigation, and staff investigation. Minutes of these closed sessions will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Any questions? Call the board, please.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Brigholi?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Mr. Lavery?
Yes. Item two, our student representative report.
Good evening. I'm Anissa Singh, and I'm delighted to be delivering this report to you all.
Good evening. I'm Gabby Streppich, and we are both very excited to be providing you all with a report tonight.
As the holiday season is approaching, Hightstown thought it would be beneficial to give back to the community and host a drive-through light show at the front of the high school on Wednesday, December fifteenth, from five to seven P.M. This gives students the opportunity to showcase the sports teams or clubs they are participating in. This is an event to bring the community together. Not only will it include participation from the high school, but with the four elementary schools and Krebs Middle School as well.
Along with clubs and sports teams participating from the high school, many organizations from the community and town will also be participating. These organizations include Rise and Be the Light. Each club, organization, and team will each have their own tables set up, representing their organization with a festive winter twist to it. Some of the organizations will be providing the community with goodies such as homemade holiday cookies and hot chocolate.
All of the high schools' winter sports have now started back up. Each sports team has been meeting after school to attend practice and participate in games and meets. All sports have now played or participated in scrimmages, so will now be transitioning into their regular season games. As we are still remaining to follow COVID-19 protocols, regulations will need to be taken into consideration. Each winter sport takes place inside, so there will be limited fans at these events. Continuing throughout the season, numbers of fans can increase or decrease depending on the spread or lack of the virus.
All winter sports teams had media day this past weekend, taking place on Saturday, December eleventh, 2021, in the high school library. Each team showed up dressed in their uniforms at their own designated time slot. The teams had time slots to keep the space organized and to ensure that each team was not intermingling with one another. This day was a great success, and we cannot wait to see how every athlete's pictures turned out.
Winter break is now approaching, so the student council would like to present a Holiday Spirit Week. This Spirit Week will take place from Monday, December twentieth, through Thursday, December twenty-third. The days will be Monday, ugly sweater, Tuesday's eighties Aspen, Wednesday, New Year's Eve 2022, and Thursday, pajama and holiday headwear day.
Thank you for listening to our concerns and report tonight. We hope that everyone has a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you for that report. Item three, superintendent's report.
Good evening, East Windsor Regional School District. Thank you to our student representatives, Gabby and Anissa. I'd like to begin this evening with some good news. Before, actually, right after the last meeting in November, Peter and the Star Catcher, the Fall Drama, was scheduled to open, I believe, on November nineteenth. So I did have the opportunity to attend. I just want to congratulate the very talented cast and crew under the direction of Mr. Zachary Love. Great performance. Look forward to the arts continuing this year. Also, at the last meeting, we had talked about the Governor's Educator of the Year honorees, or the nominees at that point, and we were looking, I think, for December, beginning of December, a close date, to get those names into the principals within the district. So pleased to share tonight the names of those individuals who are going to be recognized as our honorees for this school year. So for Ethel McKnight Elementary School, we have Valerie Barbarice and Phyllis Kempner. Walter C. Black Elementary School, Daria Taramina, Maria Grace Welsh. For Grace and Rogers School, we have Anna Martinez. For Perry L. Drew School, Kim Ostrowski and Holly Papas. Mulvanish Krebs Middle School, Laura Lee and Meg Stratton. And for Hightstown High School, Stephanie Stevenson and Jim Furtick. The district will dedicate time in an upcoming board meeting to formally recognize each of this year's recipients, but I wanted to make sure we congratulated them this evening. On the agenda tonight, we're asking the board to approve the Safe Return Plan. It's really been approved. We initiated it in June as part of the agreement to accept the RFSA funding by the federal government. There was a Safe Return Plan that was required for all fund recipients, and it was really just connected to returning to in-person instruction, ensuring that there was a safe plan in place. A few areas that were connected to that were maintaining health and safety, so there was provisions connected to that, ensuring continuity of services and an element for public comment. There's a six-month review, and actually, it can be revised at any time, but there must be a six-month review. So administratively, reviewed the document. Do not see any changes that need to be made at this time, but just, really, just a matter of our six-month update as we move forward. I do want to take a moment to talk about the incident at the high school last week. Obviously, we had some threatening language placed on the bathroom wall. So let me begin by extending my sincere thank you for the poised grace displayed by high school students, staff, administration, and families last week. I also need to express my appreciation to the Hightstown Police Department, whose support has been tremendous during the past few days. As things begin to settle down, as a school district, we will debrief the incident and reflect on what we need to do differently moving forward. I believe we've learned several important lessons. I'll just share a few of those. First of which, although these were words on a wall, as a high school in the United States, we are not immune to the potential threat of gun violence. We must continue our commitment to nurturing safe and caring schools. Whether this was done as an element of being mischievous, or a prank, or something with more malicious intent, it reaffirms that we still have work to do to ensure that all students feel a sense of connection to the school community. We must help students find healthy and constructive ways to express their frustration, anger, and vulnerabilities. In addition, we must continue to build trust and leverage the importance of adult-to-student relationships within our school. We also need to assess our established school security procedures, protocols, and equipment. In closing, on behalf of the East Windsor Regional School District, I would like to wish everyone a very peaceful, jubilant holiday season and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions from the board on Mark's report? Okay. We'll proceed to item four A, first opportunity for board member comments. Any comments from the board tonight? Item four B, then, is the first opportunity for public comments. We have a process of submitting written questions for the board. Did we have any submitted tonight? We do not. So the forum is open, the podium is there, and anybody wishing to speak, please sign in, name and address, and speak that for the record, your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Karen Salter, twenty-four, Sussex Lane in East Windsor. Mr. Daniel Sperse, I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging what we need to do moving forward. My advice would be for administration to truly help the students' mental states because we're still in a pandemic, and it cannot be business as usual. But my high school students, and I've taken this up with Mr. Vincent, we've discussed it, they have hours of homework. The homework policy needs to be revamped. My students, my kids have homework on weekends. They had homework over Thanksgiving break. Both of those in the district policy says it's highly discouraged, but it's happening. My freshmen had an honors bio test today, Monday, after two days of being, I kept her home from school, and most of, you know, a large majority of students were off, yet she had an honors bio test today because the teacher said, "We're so far behind as it is, we have a lot of curriculum to cover, we need to move on." That's not acceptable. We expect these kids to be business as usual, but we're not. We're all wearing masks, we're socially distanced. The sporting events have restrictions on numbers. The kids are screamed at and berated at lunch to sit down, put your dividers up. They can't hear one another. Filling out a survey does nothing for their mental health. So if you think you're checking the boxes by filling out a mental survey, you're not. How about one period a week? Have the teacher say for fifteen minutes, a different period each day, the kids are just allowed to talk to one another, talk to the teacher. There's nothing like that going on. And this event, there needs to be a wake-up call for the students' mental health. Because it's concerning to me, my students are good students, I'm involved, they're well-respected, they're athletic, but they're feeling the stress because there's no social connection with these masks on, yet all of the demands and expectations are the same, and they've been home for a year and a half. So I just ask the board and administration to please seriously look at that because it's affecting our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak at this forum?
My pen is not working.
My name is Rochelle Saint Fard from Four Lexington Court in East Windsor. I am also the director of the Be the Light Center. This kind of speaks to what Kim came up here and talked about. The Be the Light Center is a place in downtown Hightstown for young people to come and just hang out and just be. We are there, I mean, I'm not, I don't totally advertise that it's for mental health, but the bottom line is, that's what it's for. It is for the kids to come, be comfortable, a safe environment. It is supervised every time we are open. I will pass flyers to the board so you guys can see it. I'm not sure if everyone is aware of our existence, but I wanted to come tonight to tell the board, as well as the public, that the Be the Light Center is open. We are right next to the Rise thrift store. If you're facing Rise, we're on the left-hand side. It's a building with big windows, and there's painting on it because Hightstown High students did come and do some painting for us for the holidays. But I just really want to make sure that everyone knows that we're there, and we're working on communicating to our kids to make sure that they know it's there. It's for seventh through twelfth grade right now. So that's the ages that we're targeting, and we just want to make sure that it's a place where kids can come and just hang out and feel safe. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but like I said, I will pass out some of your flyers, the flyers, to the board as well. One other thing I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, is if the board would communicate to, you know, the rest of the community that we exist to, that would be wonderful. I am working in consultation with Dave Rowe. We do send out things. All of the counselors are aware of our existence. We're working on getting in front of the staff so that the teachers will know, because they have so much interaction with the kids, we want to make sure that they are aware of our existence as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Rochelle? Rochelle? Yeah?
I think, you know, we have a Friday distribution where we send an email communication to all families, so I think you've been tagged to that, but I would continue to ask you to take advantage of it. So if you have something, whether it's just general information or a specific event, just funnel it to Dave or myself, and we'll make sure we get it out.
Definitely. Yeah, I have a couple of things that I'll get to you now. We're actually doing an ugly sweater contest and cookie decorating party on Thursday, December twenty-third, from one to four, because there is early dismissal. One other thing I wanted to mention is that we are working to be open every day. Up until last week, we were only open Monday and Thursday, but I've come upon kids waiting to get in when we're not open. So made the decision that I will be there every afternoon if I don't have other volunteers there, and we will be open as much as we can every day after school from two-thirty till six P.M.
Thanks, Rochelle. Any other speakers from the public tonight?
So my name is Ritu Sharma from East Windsor, Nine Shoreham Court. My question, I would like to put up with all this going on and all the recent happenings, why can't we, like, put metal detectors on the doors and at least for like two weeks, no backpacks like the other schools have done? And more screening? So I know it will be very difficult, and what about, like, what is the school doing about more drills to, like, you know, to teach the kids that, you know, if there's an active shooter, what to do so that, you know, more active drills, not about just violence, but like active shooter drills that they do in all nursing homes, all offices? So when they do like this, these drills, it's in the muscle memory of the kid, like, what to, how to react and how to do and not, it's just like not, they just don't Google it and then, you know. So my suggestions would be like, you know, these three, like, at least you guys can do, like, no backpacks for two weeks till the things settle down, and then more drills so the kids have a plan that, you know, this is the exit where I can just open the window and run away. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll just respond briefly. I mean, as I said during my report tonight, we are going to be reviewing a number of things, and actually, our security procedures will be one of those aspects. Just so you know, we're obligated to conduct security drills each month, so there's about four different drills, and two of those ultimately are lockdown drills that I do believe, from a muscle memory standpoint, our staff and students are well-trained and have a sense of how to engage in that. I'm not going to get into a commitment or a comment about metal detectors tonight. I think, you know, we're a learning institution. I want to make sure we focus on that. I wouldn't rule out metal detectors as being a choice, but I just want to just reiterate that we have no evidence of a gun being in our school. We're talking about something that was written on the wall that we took seriously, but there's no gun in our school. We always have the opportunity to search book bags and the possessions of students at any time, and that's something that we definitely leave on the table. If we believe that we have reason to engage in that process, we'll do so. But I appreciate your feedback tonight, but I don't want you to think that we're not at all prepared. We've got a pretty extensive array of cameras within our school district, especially at the high school, and our students and staff, as I said, are clear in terms of safety protocols and procedures. However, I do think it's a healthy opportunity for us to not take things for granted and make sure we review all of our practices. So thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak at this forum? There'll be another opportunity a little later on after we come back from our closed session. Okay. With that, we are going to go into a short executive session. There are a couple of items listed, Staffing Report, HIB Report, and then we'll come out. We'll have a much later executive session at the end of the meeting.
You're welcome.
As promised, that was very brief, probably a record. And we'll move to item six, which is the full of whole business. Just for reference, we have, put in this item, the draft meeting dates. We will vote on these January third in our reorganization meeting, but just for reference, we've added these, um, these draft meeting dates.
Yeah, what, what would probably say is, the good thing is we've got the same board transitioning. So I'd say, take a look at these dates. If something on here that you know, you, you know, doesn't work for you, uh, or if there's some feedback, please share it with Paul, uh, prior to January third.
Okay, item seven, mandated policies for second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading. A, policy fifteen eighty-one, domestic violence. B, policy twenty-four twenty-two, health and physical education. C, policy fifty-three thirty, administration of medication. D, policy seventy-two forty-three, supervision of construction. E, policy eighty-two twenty, school day. F, policy eighty-four sixty-two, reporting potentially missing or abused children. And G, policy fifty-three thirty, administration of medication.
Any questions? Call the board please.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Brigholi.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Mr. Lavery.
Yes.
Only just a point of order. You ended with administration of medication.
Yes, um, that, was that repeated, C and G? They both have.
If you're actually refreshed, that was brought up before the meeting, so that'll, that has been removed. The second one's been removed.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to revise anything?
I think we're okay.
Okay. All right, um, item eight then, mandated regulations for second reading.
Eight, motion to approve on second reading, A, regulation fifteen eighty-one, domestic violence. And B, regulation fifty-three thirty, administration of medication.
Second.
Any questions? Call the board please.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Brigholi.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Mr. Lavery.
Yes.
Nine, slight difference here being a recommended policy as opposed to a mandated policy. This, uh, recommended policy for second reading.
Yep, so nine recommended policies for second reading, motion to approve on second reading. A, policy eighty-two ten, school year.
Second.
Any questions? Call the board please.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Brigholi.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Mr. Lavery.
Yes.
Item ten, ten is a second opportunity for board member comments. If we could, we'll start with the report of our wellness committee that occurred just before this evening, till this meeting this evening.
All right, we had a wellness committee, committee meeting, um, before the meeting. Um, and Dave Rowe, um, very helpfully gave me bullet points here to read. Um, so we talked about, we added a K through two counselor and a three through five counselor. Um, and we also, uh, dedicated, um, a position for a bilingual counselor. And so that person, uh, works specifically with bilingual students, uh, which, um, actually, according to them decreased. Sorry. I'm sorry. Decreased, uh, the numbers of students that each counselor had, and it sounds like everybody has below, um, two hundred people. Um, there was a training for staff, uh, for a program called Good Grief, helping students to, uh, deal with any kind of loss. And there was, uh, mental health first aid training for the staff as well. More unfortunately, during the pandemic and as a result possibly of the pandemic, seeing an uptick in, um, students reporting symptoms of anxiety and depression. Um, there is a program called Care Solace, um, which is a referral program that any student or community member can call or, actually, it's more of a computer-based program. Uh, operates twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Um, and it's a referral program where you let the folks know what you're looking for and they will help connect you. They will help with insurance, um, and they'll help with making sure that you get connected to the right services. Um, and that's for anyone in the community. Um, Big Brothers and Big Sisters is also operating, um, in person this year. Um, and so that's doing well. And then we also continue to partner with our, um, mental health professionals from Rutgers. Um, and so they also are providing services, um, in the elementary, middle, and high school this year.
Thank you. Anyone from the committee want to add to that? Very good. All right, are there any other comments from the board this evening? Rob?
So, you know, first of all, I think, uh, great work managing the incident in the high school. I thought, you know, there were a few things that probably rattled people, especially the, on the Thursday when everyone came back to school. And, you know, what, based on the learnings from that, I, I, I heard that there was a long line of parents waiting to pick up their kids out of the blue. Because they had heard some, some stories. So are we looking at some kind of guideline or, uh, or, you know, communication to the parents if some, something like that happens? I think there was a lot of, people were not aware what was happening, at least the ones that were waiting. So how do we avoid that and is there something that we should think proactively and do?
I think there's, there's always opportunity for reflection, so, you know, I think there's a host of things I'd like to review. Um, you know, one, you know, this kind of reminds me a little bit of a scenario where, you know, on Thursday, I'll be quite frank, I mean, there was a lot of rumor spreading, a lot of inaccuracies. Uh, in hindsight, you know, we had a, we had a heightened police presence here on Thursday for a good reason. Um, you know, we, we potentially game planned that a little bit differently. I think there's a, there's a couple of things the police were doing. We have our security booth at the high school, as you know, in the foyer. And we have our computers set up in there, and it's, and it's not exclusive to that area, but the police were reviewing a lot of film. So I think that, um, just by virtue of kind of some of the optics associated with that, I think it kind of played into some of the narrative. Um, I think that when we have parents arriving at the building, I think we have to have a proactive plan to ensure that we are, um, creating an organized process for them to wait and then have their child, um, kind of brought down to the, to the foyer. The other piece I'd say is, you know, I, I'm really, um, conscientious about accurate information being shared from the school district. I think in hindsight, you know, we, we could potentially share, um, information a little, probably a little faster. But, you know, sometimes, as you know, you, it's a catch-22, so you want to share enough information, so therefore it's alleviating anxiety. The last thing I want to do is kind of put out an, you know, some snippets and then it almost kind of leaves some question marks. But I think if, if there's one thing, uh, we probably could be, or, you know, the other part, I'd say this slightly facetiously, is that, uh, you know, we're playing a game of, uh, which, which I'm just going to just say, I've said this since I've been in the school district. I'm not a, I'm not a huge fan of East Windsor Cares, right? And I know I'm going to offend people, but I feel that unfortunately, people are relying on Facebook as a means of credible information instead of contacting the source. And I will say that if there's information that parents need to know, uh, the school district will provide that information. That should be deemed as the credible information. It is disappointing that we are competing with opinions as it relates to serious matters. So I think what we need to do is to almost, and I hate to, to frame it in that way, but in, in situations like that, Ron, it's almost like we're slightly competing with the East Windsor Cares narrative. And, um, if that's what we have to do, then we'll do it. But I, but I still want to rely on calm, level-headed, direct communication that we believe is factual, because the last thing I want us to do is send something out that we then have to retract and correct. So I think if you were going to say one thing, I think I'd like to kind of have a shorter, more frequent piece of communication. And then at the conclusion of the day, maybe provide something that's a little bit more comprehensive regarding where we are.
No, thanks for that. I think in situations like this, our communication team should track and immediately respond if possible. That's, that's great to know. The other thing that I heard and which was very, very concerning is there were kids walking out of the school without signing, signing out.
Well, no. I'm not familiar with that. I, I can only, what I will say to you is, I believe that when, um, students, you know, had a visual connection with their parent, that's when they exited. I'm not aware of any students just walking out of the building.
Okay. I, I, I was not here, but what I heard from parents who had come to pick up.
Mr. Vincent is here. Mr. Vincent, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so what I heard from parents who had come to pick up the children were,
I, I, I'm not familiar with that.
They were leaving the building without signing, signing out. That's not accurate. Okay.
So we had some students, once they had a visual of their parent, then we talked to them on the phone. We let them go out without showing I D. That's our normal, we have over, we have over secure for a sign-off procedure. Many of us were simply having a note. We documented that, we let them go. We require parents to come to the booth, check their I D. Make sure that that person is on the list. All we did was they had a visual, a phone, um, talked to the parent, we made a note of that, and then we let the student leave.
Okay, this is what I heard. There, there were kids walking out of the building and when some parents pointed it out, they were told that we, we can't stop them from going. Maybe I heard wrong, but if that's happening, that is concerning.
Don't, I, I was there the entire time.
Okay.
So if that's what, if a student left through a door that was not, they left the building on their own, that's, that's not a procedure to go to.
Sure. So just for me to understand, Mr. Vincent, uh, can students leave the building, I mean, say this door, if they walk out? How do we, I mean, you don't have enough security to manage that.
There's, there's a, a lot of accountability during the course of the day, so if they leave the building, say they're in a testing pod and they cannot come back in, then they have any more absent in that class. Then we would track that down and then see where they absent or were they present in class. So there's, um, there's checks and downs in place, but you're absolutely right. If you want to escape, for lack of a better word, if you want to go out of the door, that's, you do not manual doors. There's only one door in and out that is, you're buzzed in, that being a main door once you school, you school in. And so they go out, um, you could do that. There are students that leave during the course of the day and it's locked or independent. So, uh, for example, Bothax students that drive, they leave on their own pre-will. So you would have seen Bothax students that day leaving on their own, you go to Bothax. We had Bothax students returning back to school. And we had a large number of students that leave last period of their co-op. So, um, and that's mostly all senior students. So they, we have it documented that they are to leave. So you would see students coming and going, because that, that day was a normal bell schedule, testing time. We treated that as a regular instructional day.
All right, as long as you're, you're happy that there's controls, I'm fine. But there is, I mean, there was concern that kids were just walking out of the building on Thursday. Just for you to know, I mean, maybe you have.
Again, I'm, I'm, I'll say again, I was very clear, just, are my administration was on half of all students. We were, in the beginning, we were having parents come to the front. Follow a protocol on all we did was make a note, and after that, sure that the parent of record took that student and then we updated that student.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis. If you have one.
One more thing, but if someone else has, has a complaint, please.
I do have a question, um, actually to go on what Ron was saying. Are the doors locked from the outside?
Yes.
So people can, all the doors of all schools?
They are, they're all locked.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, they're locked from outside but not from inside. Anyone can walk out.
Now, the reason they're not locked from the inside is because that's a safety concern. When we need to get out, with the, we need to be able to exit the door.
Right.
Ron, do you want to continue?
No, I think.
Okay.
I'll table that maybe next time, I think.
Okay. All right, we'll move to item ten B, the second opportunity for public comments. Anyone from the public wanting to address the board superintendent of the district at this time?
Hi again, my name is Ritu Sharma from East Windsor, nine Shoreham Court. Uh, I just want to, it just occurred to my mind that in case of a active shooter in the school, how do you communicate to the kids? Is there a code, like, you know, that you announce and the kids know that this is code red or code blue or like, you know, something? So that everybody's alert and they can plan their action? That's all I want to know.
Yeah, if there's, if there's an active shooter, I mean, so we have, we drill, there's two drills, they're, they're both lockdown drills. It's the same procedure. There'll be an announcement that indicates lockdown. And students know what to do and staff know what to do at that time. We wouldn't say active shooter, we wouldn't differentiate that. We just say lockdown, lockdown, and it's understood what, 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 what needs to be done. And we, we deliberately don't use codes because we don't want people to get confused regarding like, what does this code mean? We just make it very clear that it's a lockdown. That's an alarm and you exit. So the alarm is an indication that you need to get out of the building. The, uh, the security drill will either be a, an announcement indicating that we need to do something, whether it's a shelter in place, a lockdown, and that'll be communicated via the P A.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Okay, we'll move on. Item eleven?
Eleven, motion to approve routine items by exception. Having read the materials received, I move that the board approve the routine agenda item as submitted. A, staffing twelve thirteen twenty twenty-one. B, substitute pay. C, H I B report from November fifteenth twenty twenty-one. D, travel slash virtual and related expenses. E, safe return plan, six-month review. F, out of district placement. G, implementation of community-based instruction for Hightstown High School, East Windsor Regional School District. H, approve new field trip site for upcoming H H S robotics competition. I, approve P L D surplus library books for disposal slash donation. J, approve H H S surplus library books for disposal slash donation. K, acceptance of A I E residency grant for Walter C. Black School. L, approve American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Elementary and secondary schools emergency relief fund A R P, E S S E R fund submission. M, anonymous donation to M H K Leadership Club. N, H H S uncompensated club, A Y L U S, A L U S, Hightstown branch. O, professional services for students. P, bus route contractors for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Q, Trenton Public Schools vehicle maintenance proposal twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. R, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two health and safety checklist of school buildings. S, M one worksheet slash comprehensive maintenance plan. T, bid award for P L D exterior renovation phase two. U, bid award for G N R interior renovation phase three. V, transfer of school monies for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. W, co-op purchases. X, report of the board secretary and financial report, October twenty twenty-one. Y, expense and transfer of school monies report, October twenty twenty-one. Y, expense and transfer of school monies report, October twenty twenty-one. And Z, bill list of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, just, I had one for, um. Oh, wait, no, I, I don't. Sorry.
I had a couple of questions. The renovations that we're doing, if you can give us an idea of what the contracts are for?
Certainly. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he was looking me good. Oh, go ahead. Sorry about that. The PLD exterior renovation phase two is a takeoff from what we did last year. So we did the original, um, facility. So this summer we'll be doing the same renovation that we did last summer on the, um, on the outside pod areas, which has the library and some classrooms. So it'll be the same thing, it'll be new exterior, it'll be new doors, new windows, all the way around. The second project is the third year of our G N R interior renovation, that's where we go through, and we renovate the rooms as far as the fixtures. So new ceiling, new lights, HVAC in four classrooms. So that, that is part of a multi-year, I think, an eight, about up to an eight-year renovation cycle.
The other question I had was, you know, most of these trips, there is a, there's some documentation that is attached, I don't see any of this.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
For the H H S robotics trip and, you know, the normally I, there are some documents attached to the, to the requests. I don't see any. Is there an approval form or something?
This, this is actually not approving a trip, it's approving a site. So I, I think they anticipate going there at some point, and they wanted to get the site approved prior to that.
Right, there's no attachment.
This, this.
Do you have an attachment?
It, it, it doesn't require an attachment. This is only, it's, they're only asking for the specific site to be approved.
Oh.
Oh, which is in Basking Ridge? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, it's just a site. So if there's, if it's a trip, you're right, there would be some documentation, but this is just, it's just adding something to the, 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 the list, as it were, of, of where we may go.
No, they just changed locations.
Okay. So this, this was a trip, I believe, so the robotics team has a schedule, I call it that, like a schedule of events, and this is a new site that needed to be approved. Any other questions?
No, you're good. Jean?
I do have a question for the, um, the interior renovations for G N R. Does that also include, like, the bathrooms, or is that just like windows and, does it include bathrooms?
Yeah, as part of our plan, we actually do, uh, the bathrooms as well. So last year we did, um, two bathrooms. When I say two, a set of two, so we did a total of four bathrooms last year. This, this summer, there, there's no bathrooms to be done.
Okay, thank you.
If a board member wants to see the plans that we're approving?
I can, I can give an update to Mark, and he can send it as part of his weekly notes, that's probably the best way, that way everyone.
Do we have PDF versions of the?
We do.
Okay.
I can, I can share them.
Or a folder, or a link to a folder where we can see them?
Sure.
That'd be great.
And, and, and I think, you know, we've had some work that's happened in the past couple of years, so it probably would make sense as well to organize a couple of visits, just so you can kind of see it firsthand. So we'll look to see if we can get something on the calendar, all right?
That would be good. We used to consider, a long, long time ago, rotating the sites of the board meetings.
That's a great idea, I love that idea.
With the logistics of the cameras and audio and all that, it's probably not.
Yeah, maybe some, somewhere in the future, you know?
Sure.
Definitely. Now, we have some good work though happening, so I think it'd be good, you know, for you to see it in the flesh, as it were.
Okay, um, any other questions? I do want to thank the anonymous donor, donating a thousand dollars for, um, holiday gifts for families in our community. It's greatly appreciated. Call the board, please.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Brigholi?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Mr. Lavery?
Yes.
Item twelve is our second executive session. Um, it will be a lengthy one, we will adjourn the meeting from in there, and that's the end of our public business for the evening. Thanks for joining us.